They've agreed to that. They've already agreed to a conditional inclusion based on obtaining Great Lakes diversion water. They've already agreed to allow us to enter into negotiations with other suppliers in order to obtain services from other suppliers. So all those things have already been agreed to. There's nothing here that they haven't previously agreed to.
They've agreed to the last item you just mentioned about being able to negotiate with someone else.
Yes, they have. On April 22nd, first, in two places. On April 22nd, when Joe and I met with Dan Duzniak, Ed Hanschel, the head of Sewer PAC, the head of this region from the DNR, the county, they agreed to that. That's the first time, that's the second time they agreed to it. The first time they agreed to it was back on May 4th, 2011, when they said inclusion in the water service area does not prevent the town from obtaining and serving town residents with an alternative water supply through a town-run utility or other alternative supplies. It is only, it only allows for it as an option for town residents. So they've already agreed to all these things. There's nothing here that hasn't been previously agreed to.
On the April 25th letter from Mr. Hanschel of the City of Waukesha. And bullet point number two, with regard to annexations, the City of Waukesha will agree to compensate the town of Waukesha for 20 years at the town's mill rate for the value of the property at the time the annexation is approved by the city. This would be effective once the city receives all the necessary approvals for its application for Great Lakes water and begins receiving Great Lakes water. Now, as we mentioned earlier in the meeting, that if we're going to be competitive and we'll be able, perhaps looking at the 164 corridor, and we have an individual that wants to sell five, 10, 20 acres, with our mill rate being what it is, and the city's mill rate being what it is, I don't think it takes a mathematician to figure out, you want to stay with the City of Waukesha, with the town of Waukesha, as opposed to annexing to the city.
Yes.
But yet, they simply say, yes, we will agree to pay you 20 years. Sure, they're probably not going to pay us nothing if everything works out and people stay in our town. But by then, the city, not indicating in concrete, in stone, no way, shape, or form, and I love those words, no way, shape, or form, will we mandate, mandate, a resident of the town of Waukesha, Waukesha to annex into the city to receive sewer or water services? That's the way I want that written, not the way Mr. Duzniak wrote that on May 4th, two years ago.
Let me, let me address that. A couple of things. You're not, you're not going to get something like that in writing. Number one, I don't think that their attorneys would, number one, I don't think their attorneys are going to let that happen. Number two, they don't want residential properties. They're not interested in residential properties because the cost to provide services to the residential properties far outweighs the tax income that they get from it. That's number two. Number three, wouldn't it be perfect if those properties did stay in the town of Waukesha, and we didn't have to worry about the 20 years? And then we get to develop those properties, and instead of having a 40 acre parcel that's worth perhaps six or seven or eight hundred thousand dollars, it turns into a seven or eight million dollar strip mall, and we get to assess it that way, and all of those funds stay right here in the town of Waukesha. That's the goal. We don't want the 20 years of taxes, because it's a pittance. On an empty piece of property, we do not want that 20 years of taxes. We want the taxes to stay in the town for a developed piece of property. We can now accomplish that since we will have the ability to provide sewer and water services to those properties. That's the goal.
So based on what I said, in stone, in concrete, why wouldn't the city agree to that? If they're so, based on Duzniak's two-year-ago requirement, if you will, this is more profound. If in fact, Mr. Duzniak's indication that we would not be required, that's kind of like a gray area, and my statement is like, nails it down, 100 percent, no ands, buts, or's. Okay, why wouldn't the city agree to the no room for error?
Well, my take on it, Mike, is practically speaking, they won't require it, they'll just make it a condition, and then you'll get to choose to accept the condition. So practically, I, and if you just start from that point, that if a resident wants city sewer and water, that they're not going to require it, they're going to let you choose to accept their conditions, okay? Because I, that's why there's these, of every time they write the word "require." Okay, that's how I read the "this." Then you have to say, can you, and then this comes back to this being competitive, can you compete? When you look at our map, and you talk about what's left to be developed, for my liking, I come down to 164, because the rest of it's residential and it's pretty much there. So can we be competitive in keeping that land here in the town and making the developers choose to stay here? And I'm coming up with, as long as we have a choice to provide them sewer and water that doesn't have the linchpin of being conditional that you annex, I think the answer is yes. Why wouldn't they? They'd have a lower tax rate, they'd still have access to sewer, they'd have access to water. That's why I'm saying, is with this development of being able to go to Big Bend and provide sewer, this is a winning deal, because we can compete. We can keep those developers here, because we can offer them the same level of service that they'd get at a cheaper price, and everybody buys that.
Can we insert the ability to go to Big Bend, even though we assign ourselves to the water service area?
It's part of this, the letter that we're going to send says, right in there, that the town of Waukesha retains the right to enter into negotiations with the village of Big Bend for treatment services for town property. So we're telling them right up front that if there's a, let's say the DNR or Sewer PAC says, you can't do that, which they won't say, I've talked with them, and I don't believe that they have any hangup. The issue will be is Big Bend will have to request that we be inserted into their service area if we're successful in negotiating. We can't tell Sewer PAC to put us in there, they have to ask, it's their service area. So that, that's the wild card here, that we'd have to negotiate with them, get that done. And if, let's just say, a week from now, Big Bend says, happy days, we'll do this, wonderful, and we find out that we can do that, maybe, we might be back here in a week saying, hey, let's pull out 164 and put it into their service area, and we could do that.
Okay, the word "treatment," does that mean water as well as sewer?
Well, Big Bend, Big Bend does not have a water source. We'd be, we'd have to look at, like in the town-
Will we proper with sewer, as opposed to treatment? Let's be specific.
That's their motion, I don't necessarily, that doesn't bother me, but they'd have to accept those words. But water service along that route would have to be through local high cap wells, or high pump wells, that would be available to those businesses. Joe, I'm not quite as cynical as you on the conditional part of it, and I'll tell you why. Of the properties that have been given water and/or sewer service since 1999, you've got Oakview Manor, obviously a commercial property, the Berkshire, something that I think the city would love to have it, Alexander and Associates, Baldwin Heating, Midwest Plumbing, Pebble Creek Craftsman, Walmart, Auto Paint and Supply, J.D. Byrider. All of those were given water and/or sewer service and not required or conditioned to annex. I, I think there's, there's a lot of precedence here, where properties are given those services, not required to annex, and from my perspective, again, if I were a property owner and I had the option to pay one-fifth of the local tax, and receive the same services, and perhaps a easier time at a, at a town board rather than facing 15 or 17 council members, I think I'd stay in the town every time.
That store at Walmart, is that the Walmart on West Avenue?
It is, no, on 164. I said 59, sorry.
Oh, they took 59, which will be the new Walmart grocery store, if you will.
Yes.
They forever had, never needed the city water. They've been on a holding tank situation forever. I don't know where you came up with something recent.
In July 20th of 1999, they received city water.
Without sewer?
Yes.
That's correct. But in the event we have to align our map sewer and water, those days are going to be gone.
And that you bring up, not, we had already included them in the area, but if we had not, as an example, and they would have needed to annex because they're on city water, the city gets Great Lakes water, they would have had to gone on sewer, and we would have sort of lost that property.
Could it be possible that that Walmart on 59 is part of that Fly Ash situation that was out there, and there was an agreement with the DNR that that water could be supplied for those folks and businesses in that area without annexation? Could that be the reason they did not annex and did get city water?
It's a possibility. I don't know the answer to that question, but I could certainly do some research. I would say that the answer is yes, just like among center, there's an MOU, memorandum of understanding, that provided for a number of those to have water and not. So I, and I don't think, we shouldn't focus on the, how did they? I think the safest position where I'm going to consider this is, if you all want water and sewer from the City of Waukesha, plan on being in the City of Waukesha, because I think that's a safe place for us to make decisions from, that we'll lose those properties. And then you have to figure out a way to be more competitive, and it's going to focus on, and that's where I'm committed to, to working hard to get that deal with Big Bend put together, because it keeps options available. You might want to look, give anybody in the audience, if you look at the map, right up here, these things that are in the kind of the turquoise or blue, there's the Walmart property, you see some of these other properties and everything there. Again, I agree, I mean, that's, it's the reality of what it is. We could take every one of those properties, and I'm sure you could do the search on that to find out how it came to be. The reality is, they are there, they're in the town, they're on city water, there's a precedent for that, and again, this isn't about absolutes, that if we can put this agreement together, I think going forward, and I agree completely with Joe, if we are competitive, and part of that competition, again, may be looking at how we zone properties and allow people to develop them, we remain in control of that, we're competitive, we have some flexibility, and we basically have memorialized an agreement, not required to obtain water service or sewer service from the city. I think we and people want to develop in the town, can make some good and credible arguments to give it to them.
I simply will not support this motion with its amendments as it's stated at this point. I need some rock-solid protection right now, before I even send it back to the city. Being competitive, I can understand, I get the picture, but it's not mentioned anywhere, and we didn't even talk about verbalizing competitiveness, if you will. So we talked about a lot of things, but unless I see something rock-solid, and that will indeed protect us, if they get this water before us, they don't simply just abscound some property through annexations. I need that to go forward.
When you say "before us," how, what do you mean?
Well, if we're going to negotiate with Big Bend and we got water coming, we might not get it till the year 2018, maybe never get it for that matter, and the city does get the straw, they beat us to the punch. Now, what prevents them from taking care of 164 to the point where there's nothing left, if you will?
Well, why wouldn't we have the water from them? If the City of Waukesha has the water, we have the access to it also.
We have the access, right. But do you, okay, let's back it up. They will, based on the agreements, or the council will decide if it's, if it's permissive. In other words, you're saying at this point, with the city sewer and water, if we go with the whole program, the whole town, 164, somebody can come in here, virtually put in a business on 164, and be part of our town, or indicate, they will have to be part of the city pending a condition, if you will, for annexation. Now, if some developer's going to come in here, and they want to put this particular business in place, okay, and the city says, sure, the town of Waukesha is part of the water service area, but our condition is, before you put up that apartment building, we want to annex you into the city. What protection do we have to stop that from happening? We just lost an apartment house, even though we're in the water service area.
I understand. Well, you've got, you've got a couple of protections. Number one is the protection that the developer's going to fight to stay here for a lower tax base, that's number one. And number two, there's a guaranteed capacity for treatment and water that's designated to the town. The city's gone through, there are calculations to determine in the city borders what they need for sewer and water capacity. They already know that, because they're providing it. The additional one and a half million gallons per day of capacity is designated to the town for our use within town borders. That's one of the protections that we have.
Okay, I understand. Now, the developer wants to come in and put up this particular property. You said he had, he would prefer to have it in the town of Waukesha, but what fight does the developer have when the conditions are set where that property is going to be located by the City of Waukesha and their demand to annex? The developer's, his main concern is getting that property going. He's going to take the conditions, put up his development, and look in the rear-view mirror as he leaves.
One, one solution that, Mike, could be that we, we would have the ability to buy services, and John, when you just said this, I've connected a few dots, so discussion works. We'd have the ability to buy services as a town, direct from the city, wholesale. Now that means that we've developed a water utility, the city, the town of Waukesha water utility, and we're buying water for town use at our direction. So if we had a development like this, one of the things that we, we could employ that tool if we so chose and said, hey, we'll take 300,000 gallons of water per day, and we're going to return you 300,000 gallons of sewer water to be treated per day, and we would control the distribution of that, if that's the way we chose to do it, as a municipality will buy it wholesale. So we would be able to go to those businesses directly and say, hey, we can give you that water, you don't need to go to the city to do it. Some of the other development advantages that a city has over a town were recently taken away, and that's the whole TIF financing, so we even have a more even playing field there. So I, I thought that up, we could solve that puzzle.
I don't want to be the "they say" guy here.
No, this is discussion-
I need fortification, I need muscle here, I'm looking for muscle, okay? I'll read, I'll read this here, in respect to what you just talked about. "The purchase of water by the town or owners of individual properties will require the approval of the common council when a specific request for water is made." So therefore, control, competitiveness, is governed by the city common council. I only am reading bullet point number six.
I, I will tell you that bullet point number six bothers me. I've said it a number of times, that why would, if annexation wasn't going to be a requirement or a conditional approval, why would we have to go to the common council? And, and the only way I can say that we, we have two options to end around that, and one is to acquire the water wholesale. The other option is really, as we've already talked, going into Big Bend, working on that, and the local hyperbass yields. I don't want to beat that to death, but, I mean, those are, those are the two bullets in our gun that we can fire at developing 164 in the town. And the, the key, in my opinion, from a cost basis, is to connect with Big Bend, because buying water wholesale from the city would probably be more expensive, is my guess.
Mike, with regards to that, all of these properties have had to go before the common council, that's the precedent that's been set. They have to go before the common council to request the water and sewer services. Again, 20 of them have gotten it, none have been required to leave the town in order to receive water or sewer services.
Yeah, but some of that-
I mean, that's the precedent.
Yeah, but some of that is hedged, because you really, you got this, you've got a couple of agreements in place that were negotiated and beat out, and-
I mean, those were pretty old, you're talking about the ones, I'm talking about, this is just since 1999.
Right.
The ones that were hammered out on Center and on Sunset, those are, those are long ago stuff, happening in the 80s, I think.
But those are, some of those properties are, Price Plumbing, Rick Price Plumbing, his property is included in that agreement, I mean, that's why he's got water. Yeah, it's a good thing, it's a great development, glad to have him.
To some, to some degree, I, to some degree. But there are others here, and that's just been, the requirement is, you have to go before the town council, the, the county council, and there's, there's not a way around that. Again, I think Brian spoke to it very eloquently, it's not perfection, but it's what we, it's what we have to work with, and if we remain competitive, and we, and we're be, by far more competitive than the, the city could ever be, why, why would a business want to go pay five times the amount of tax? There's just, there's no reason for it.
If you've got to set a handcuffs out there, and you have no options, then I guess there is a reason for them to go to the city.
Well, that's what we have, those options, we have to get those options. I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to say that this is, you for it, we have work to do if we want to protect that land. It lies, the difference is, I think that this puts us at the plate, ready to hit the wall, because then it's in our control. We can go with Big Bend, we can look at developing wholesale water initiative, that's an option that we want to explore, we, which again, I think is a plan B, but I think we, we would have options then to compete with them, but the big piece is, you, you can't compete with them if they're your only choice, right? Because either you can buy it wholesale, or you can buy it retail, but we're, you know, we're in control. This Big Bend piece is a game changer, and it's something we have to-
And this, Big Bend?
Sure, they could annex our land from the south, headed north. I mean, that, that's a, that's a real concern. In some ways, this, I don't want to use the words "border," you know, this keeps them from growing from the south into the north, but it gives us the option to go and negotiate with them and say, hey, look, we'd rather do our sewer treatment with you than the city, because we think we can provide water for residents and for businesses through local wells, which makes it, again, a better cost structure for those businesses, for those residents, but we need to be able to offer them sewer, and we think you're a better option for sewer, and, you know, and they probably would enjoy some of the revenue that they would get for treating our wastewater.
Again, not to be the negative guy here, okay? I don't have a big N on the shoulder here, it's just that I like to explore all the possibilities. And by your own indication, Big Bend can certainly, with that water, say, hey, we really don't want to sell you water or even tie into you, but we are interested in acquiring some of that 164 land, gosh, that looks really good to us. There's nothing stopping them from, come and get it.
Yes, there is. Let me tell you what stops them, Mike. There's, there's two things that would stop the village of Big Bend from coming and getting any of the 164 corridor. First of all, annexation of town property into the City of Waukesha is not required to obtain water service. You can't, they, they can't condition it, they can't require it, it's in writing. So there, you can't be a developer, go to the town, come to the town and say, I want to build an apartment building, and the city says, no, you're going to have to annex if you want the water. It's here, it's in writing, it says you can't be required to have it, that's number one. Number two, the village of Big Bend cannot annex property that is in the city's water service area. Once we're in the city's water service area, the village of Big Bend can't expand it unless we decide to change it. So we have to go into the village of Big Bend and say, we now want to be included in your water service area. They can't come and expand into that territory without our permission. It's the same thing as an annexation request by a property owner.
Could that be made clear then, on some of the amendments that might want to go on this piece of paper before we ship it back?
It's all, it's statutory, it's all statutory.
Well, it should be statutory real nice on this piece of paper, too.
It's, it's in the state statutes.
John, can I make a suggestion? We've got the, the main motion here's three conditions, the way it's been typed up, and I've got a purpose in doing this, not to be an irritant, but again, my motion was not seconded to include the provision for annexation of town property, the City of Waukesha is not required to obtain water service from the Waukesha water utility, for the moment, just for the sake of discussion.
He did just, he made, John made the motion, the original motion was made by John, you seconded.
Yes.
You made a-
An amendment.
Amendment.
Menting motion.
And he accepted your amendment.
You seconded, okay, then shame on me for that. I want to move forward with one thing. Would it not be, would, in my figure, what you're saying, don't we want a fifth condition in there? And I would write this separate from the fourth one, but annexation of town property into the City of Waukesha is not required to obtain sanitary sewer service from the City of Waukesha? Don't we want to put that in there, too?
While you weren't watching, Treasurer Jamie put that in already.
I'm putting it together, I can make it separate, though.
It actually reads that we, sewer and sanitary, water and sewer services.
I don't care that much, but I would add, I would actually, my suggestion or preference would be, and it should be called sanitary sewer service rather than storm sewer, I would actually make that separate from the water service thing, I don't care that much with residents combining, I would actually make them separate, so there's no question about it, call attention to it from now on. So you think, you're, you think that's a good idea to include that as a condition as well?
Yes.
Yes.
Why must we, are we so stuck on Dan Duzniak's "not required" with parentheses?
Because that, that's their hedge factor, Mike, and you're not going to get them off the hedge, you're just not going to.
But it's rock protection.
I understand that, but you have, there is-
Is it real change, or are we just silver platter?
I don't think it's silver platter, I, I really feel that we have a competitive piece here, and that is the sole reason that I find supporting it, is because we, we need to provide sewer, and then we need to be competitive. Those two pieces get accomplished here, and the whole hedge factor of required residents, if you, if you need water and they make it a condition, or you need sewer and they make it a condition, you'll have the choice of, you know, potentially looking at a holding take, potentially looking at a second source, or the infamous, you know, drilling deeper, those will be options that you'll face, or taking city water and they make, I would expect them to tell you that you're going to be required to come in, conditionally accept that you'll come in, you know, that, that's something that you as individual residents will have to consider. But I think when you look at the, the big picture, we have to be able to be competitive, but you're not going to get them off of this. I, I've tried, I've tried, I've tried, I've tried, I've tried. They're not going to come in off of it. So at some point, at some point you get done- So at some point, at some point you get done negotiating, and then you gotta size up the best parts of your deal and say, "What are the pros and what are the cons? And how can you address the negatives?" And I think the way you address the negatives is, again, for me, I've said this many times, the planning aspect is the most pivotal piece for retaining that property. And the way you solve the planning piece is you have to strike a deal with Big Ben to provide a solution there. And it's gonna take a lot of effort, nobody says we win. We could lose that, that's the risk we take. The other side of that coin is if you never provide sewer. You're never, that land will sit there as farmland for many more years. It's not doing the town, it's great to look at, farm, do those things. But if we wanted to develop it, we need to get sewer. And the best way for us to do it is to do it in Big Ben. But we have to start somewhere. I think this is the right, for me, it's the right place. I feel good about saying, this gives us a horse in the race. It protects us, it provides a sewer, we have our own water, we can work with that. I really am at ease with putting this together.
Am I saying it twice? You think they get the hint?
Brian, do you wanna make the, the second amendment for sanitary services then also?
Sure. Yeah, the, the next amendment would be to include the provision that annexation of town property into the city of Waukesha is not quote "required" unquote to obtain sanitary sewer service from the city of Waukesha.
And I would accept that. Any further discussion?
Have they changed the deadline on this water sewer service area? I was, I was having the assumption that the 20th of May was like the drop dead date?
Actually, the drop dead date for this particular letter was April 30th. I'm confident that if I go back to the city with this, that we'll be able to strike a deal with them based on the April 25th letter and the deadline be extended to this point in time.
Well, personally, my statement would be that if they're willing to extend us some time like they have, well, given the fact that back in '11, we had 45 days, a long 45 days. Needless to say, here we're, I'm looking for muscle, and I'm going to have to make that decision within the next 10 minutes, it appears. I got a problem with that.
Well, it hasn't been 10 minutes, the previous board had been making this decision for two years. We are out of time, their application is in, they will pull it back for us, I'm confident if we ask for that. But this is it, I mean, there is no more time left, there's no more negotiating, there's no more adding muscle, they're, they're done, Mike.
Year and a half, almost two years, we pondered this decision, and in one night, virtually reversed it.
And I'll, and Mike, I'm, I would, the sewer aspect is different, it's a game changer, and it's a game changer to understand that we can go outside of Big Ben, just like it's a game changer that two weeks ago, we got the DNR to approve the contingent that we had been asking, and they repeatedly just ignored our request. They never told us no, but they never told us yes, they never put it in writing. So we, we've made some critical advances in the last 45 days that, that people were resistant to before. I mean, we've been asking for the same things, you can grab the Freeman article, June of 2011, we've been asking for the same four or five things. We've now gotten a couple, two, three of those things, and for me, again, the, the strong arm of Campbell's back is the ability to still continue to pursue that relationship with Big Ben. It, it gives us the advantage. And if we didn't have that, Mike, it would, I'd probably be on the other side of the fence saying, "We're gonna divide the town on 50/50" kind of thing, and draw a big straight line on the map, and there you have it. So I think let's take a vote. We'll call, please.
Chairman Merrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Bansky?
Yes.
Supervisor Wolf?
No.
Supervisor Laska?
No.
Supervisor Fisher?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye. I'm gonna call to order the second meeting, second special meeting of this evening.